Let's call the meeting to order at 6:33. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on January 28th, 2020.
Make a motion approved minutes for January 28th, 2020.
File a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Sustainable Connecticut. We're last year or so have been looking into a program that's offered by the state in conjunction with EverSource and a couple of other energy companies. It's known as Sustainable Connecticut. It's evolved to this. It's an interesting way. Sustainable is not all that it sounds like. It's a good fundraiser, actually, for many different activities in the community. Parks and Recreation is what is used as the biggest example at the conferences that I've been at. But you can use it for buildings, for roads, however you need to. You can use it for... This information that I just gave you will give you a chance to read about it. I'll give one to Jim so we can talk about it some more. But it's towns throughout the Connecticut, or throughout the state, are able to to become a member of the Sustainable Connecticut. And you do that by simply a resolution that we would put together. And that's in the back of that. And then we can use it for... I'm just looking for some examples that they give. But I'll use Parks and Recreation as the example because that's what I remember very clearly. If you... Probably pretty close to this, but thanks. But that'll be good. The example is if, say, a very simple example. Say you wanted swings, a new swing set down at the park. Or your equipment down at the park that costs $20,000. You get out, you start a crowdsourcing thing through Sustainable Connecticut. And they will match up to 50% of what you raise. So if it's a $20,000 project, and you can raise, you raise up 10,000, you get the other 10,000 for that. This goes up to, I think...
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand is the per project is what you can get. So you can get a $50,000 project for half price. It really, some of the examples that they were giving is it brings the community, it gets the community directly involved. Say you're doing the back to the swing sets or the Parks and Recreation thing. A lot of the folks that live nearby there, or that utilize that, will be participants in the fundraising. And they'll call their friends and all that kind of stuff.
And this is free money?
It's free money. I mean, it's 50% of whatever the cost of the project. We can, you can fundraise a quarter, the town can put in a quarter, and they'll match that 50%. So it really can, it can really be very economic the way to do that kind of stuff.
You just have to raise money.
We need to set up a committee, or at least have a liaison. And Carol Jones, our Parks and Recreation director, was at a Parks and Rec meeting. And Carol, if you want to talk about that a little bit, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I went to the Connecticut Rec and Park Association. And we had a, somebody presented on this from the, his name is E. And I actually have his card. Anyway, he works with the CCM kind of doing this. So he was the community outreach manager for the Sustainable Connecticut, named E. But it really does sound very interesting. A lot of the programs that we've already done can be put towards the certification. You know, the towns work on these, it's a voluntary program, free. And you can work and kind of do sustainable projects and then gain points towards certification. But some of the ones we've already done, the upgrade of lighting in town, you know, some of these would already apply. But we have to get, like Angus said, do the resolution first, get on board. And then we can either decide to do some programs. It can be municipal programs, it could be private programs. Like if the library wanted to do something, that would probably fall under one of their... And then it's kind of a grassroots effort to raise money. And then everything is matched. And they've just tapped into some foundation money, or, you know, philanthropy money. And so it's a way that, I guess initially, the idea for this program came back in 2016, '17. And it's really towns working with towns and municipalities and businesses trying to get some money without going through that whole cumbersome grant writing. You know, this is a way to kind of just get funding right to these smaller projects.
Yeah, this evolved from a program that the town was involved in, that was directly related to the energy companies. And you would get, if you completed a certain amount of whatever that project was, like the lighting at the elementary school. That would give you a certain number of points. If you got a certain number of points, that led to a certain number of dollars that they would just issue towards another project. That was, that was like Green Connecticut or something. I can't remember the name of that. That evolved into this. And this is now not just energy, but for a lot of different things.
So, question I have, just say, we want to do a swing set at Debbets Field. It's a $25,000 project. Do we have to raise that 25,000, or the $12,500, or can we take it from a line item? Or does it have to be raised?
You have to have a minimum of 20 donors. But those donors can be a smaller amount. And then you can, the town can still put in money. And then it goes through another fund, like I think it's called IB, IOBY.
And that's my question. Does it, again, if we're just moving money from, you know, if we had money on Parks and Rec, and we want to do a swing set, you have all five, but you're saying we need 20 donors?
You need a minimum of 20 donors. But you can plan on that project. And you know, you can budget, say it's the $25,000 swing set. You can budget 8,000 from that we already have in that line. And then just raise the other 12,500, or whatever that half of that 25 is. They'll only get as, they'll go to 50% of whatever the cost of the project is.
I just didn't know if it was on 100% fundraising.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. But it can be.
They will match funds even if they come from the town.
Yes, it can't come completely from the town.
Right.
But yes, again, town funds can go into it.
That's nice.
Yeah, it's a great program. It seems as if it's a great program. And it's really just a matter of trying to, trying to, you can find someone to manage it. Carol has stepped up and says she wants to try now.
Paul's program runs.
I don't think I said it was... I said I was happy.
You'd be happy to, I think you said. So, you know, that's as close as you can get. Yeah, Jack, as far as I know, it runs indefinitely. You have to update it.
See, and there's a limited amount of money for calendar year. So you have to get your project approved. They said once, if you get your project approved, it's pretty fast. They can jump right on and do the credit source fundraising right away. And then the monies are matched right away. So there's not a lot of, you know, the money.
Right. So yeah, it runs for a while. I'll read the resolution, or the proposed resolution now. And then we can, you know, you can look at it, Jim can look at it. We'll talk about it in a couple of weeks. If you guys are on board, then we can, we can adopt it. Whereas Sustainable Connecticut is a comprehensive statewide, action-oriented voluntary certification program built by informed municipalities. With the vision that Sustainable Connecticut communities strive to be thriving, resilient, collaborative, and forward-looking. They build community and local economy. They equitably promote the health and well-being of current and future residents. And they respect the finite capacity of the natural environment. Whereas Sustainable Connecticut is designed to boost local economies, help municipal operations become more efficient, reduce operating costs, and provide grants and support, and additional support to municipalities. Whereas Deep River embraces an ongoing process of working toward greater sustainability, selecting which actions it chooses to pursue from the voluntary menu of actions provided by Sustainable Connecticut. Resolved by the Deep River Board of Selectmen, that we do hereby authorize, whoever, that's going to be maybe Carol Jones, to serve as Deep River's Sustainable Connecticut contact person for the Sustainable Connecticut municipal certification process, and authorize him or her to complete municipal register, municipal registration on behalf of Deep River. Resolved that to focus attention and effort within Deep River on matters of sustainability. And in order to promote Deep River's local initiatives and actions towards Sustainable Connecticut municipal certification, the Board of Selectmen establishes an advisory sustainability team, or revises the role of an existing committee to serve as a sustainability team. I think we, I'd like to just get a few folks so we can hopefully get to volunteer to help out with that, Carol, on that. Resolved that the first meeting of the sustainability team must be held within 90 days of passing this resolution. And that the team shall meet as frequently as needed, but no less than quarterly. Resolved that the sustainability team shall report annually to the municipal, to Deep River's Board of Selectmen on the progress of its activities towards Sustainable Connecticut certification, with reports and presentations made publicly available. So if you guys take a look at that, take a look at what the program can be. Carol, if you want to share that, make copies and get it to Jim and Duane.
Yeah, this was just from the CCM website.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's right. Thanks. So we don't have to take any action today. I just wanted to discuss it, answer any questions. Any questions that might come up from the public, we're happy to try to answer, if anybody has it. Not...
Interesting. Does it have any limitations as to where you could spend the money on any of it?
I would imagine so, but I haven't looked at, I don't think you could spend it on roads. You could probably spend it on a sidewalk. You could probably spend it on a street lamp in a public parking lot or at a park or something like that. But I don't think you could spend it on a new pickup truck or something for the town.
Yeah, there's actually nine categories if you go on their website, Sustainable Connecticut. It'll kind of break them down to things that are like environmental, energy parks, education for the community, just different things that are sustainable, you know, like gardening. And I mean, it can kind of cover everything. The lighting, like I said, upgrade that lighting, save energy. You know, it's all about trying to help Connecticut sustain, you know, being kind of...
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is tax collector refunds. We have six refunds that need requests. One is a court stipulation, the rest are overpaid. Totals $8,925.83. So if you can get a motion to authorize the tax collector to refund, make those refunds.
I'll make a motion to tax collector to pay refunds of $8,925.83.
Okay, I will second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, brings us to Audience of Citizens. And if you all don't mind, just for, I'd like to talk a bit about the our solid waste program here in Deep River. MIRA, the, there's our recycling agency, they're up in Hartford, based up in Hartford, where we and I think about 59 other towns bring our garbage to. They operate a waste-to-energy plant that is, I'm going to say it's 30 years old. It might be a little bit older than that. But that has experienced a lot of breakdowns. It needs to be rebuilt. They're going through the process of trying to, trying to either figure out whether they're going to be able to rebuild it. There's a lot of controversy about whether it should be rebuilt, whether it shouldn't be rebuilt, whether it should be built somewhere else. There's all kinds of controversy about that. But it does in fact save us. Right now, it gets, it gets the garbage out of Connecticut and out of landfills. We don't have enough landfills in Connecticut for the garbage that's being generated in Connecticut. So if MIRA goes defunct, or is unable to build this particular program, this particular waste-to-energy plant, they will, the option is to, right now, to truck the garbage out to Ohio or somewhere in Pennsylvania. There's a few landfills that can take it. Massachusetts has a couple, but their life expectancy is just a couple of years. So by the time this happens. So what MIRA is suggesting, and what they're asking for right now, what we need to act on in the next couple of weeks, probably at the next meeting, is whether or not we would pay and not, or sign a non-binding informational statement of interest. It really is just telling them that of the 59 towns that are around, would you agree to, if everything comes together, would you continue as a member? It doesn't cross us anything, and it's absolutely non-binding. But what it says is that the tipping fee, which is what it costs to bring a ton of garbage up there, which we now pay $85, is going to go up to $92. This, this tipping fee, what they're expecting, beginning in 2025, is a maximum tip fee will be set at $145 a ton. So it's a walkover increase that will, and that does not, that still provides for a zero ton for recycling and all that. So while we used to actually make a little bit of money on recycling, that's zeroed out. And that's, that's been the case for the last year anyway. But there is no market for any recycling. What it does is it gives us, and it gives MIRA some time to get this plan together. But it gives us some time also to, and also a little kick in the, kick in the behind to start thinking about how we generate garbage, how much garbage we generate, and what we're going to do about trying to keep that cost down. That's probably, it's over 50% increase in what we're paying. So I don't think that we can sustain that cost. I don't, and this is, this is a maximum. MIRA is projecting all kinds of different numbers of where it's going to land, depending on what they do with the plan. They just don't know.
My question is the maximum, or when's the maximum? Could the maximum go on effect on 2021?
Well, no, it'd be 2025.
And that's it?
Yeah.
So 2021, they can't say, hey, by the way, we'll charge 140 now?
No, we're signed up with them until, through that time. So no, they can't go, they can't go to 145 until 2025.
But what's the increase they can do?
They incrementally, they could work up towards that. But they don't, you know, and that'll, that'll be agreed upon in whatever, whatever contract we sign with them will be agreed upon.
And so if we didn't go there, where'd we go?
Well, we can go to, a lot of the other towns just go to private haulers. And they end up in Ohio or Massachusetts.
Have we looked at, have we looked at?
We have looked at some of them. They're all right now, right around $85 to $95 per ton.
Okay.
Where they're, none of the private guys are projecting what they're going to go to. Nobody's expecting it to go to 145, that I've heard, anyway.
I would like to look into that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, which are just too, too much diligence, because that's a lot of money.
No, absolutely. And what this does, though, and this is important to remember, that this is just a conceptual agreement. It doesn't bind us to anything. It allows MIRA to go to the state and say, we have these towns signed up. They're at least interested in continuing with us if we can. And MIRA has been a good, a good program for us. The thing that I don't like about it is it's, not this. This is, this I have no problem with, this non-binding statement. I want you and Jim to look at it, to talk about it, and think about it. But what I don't like about the MIRA is it's a 30-year commitment. So if we sign on with them in 2020, just, which is way too ambitious. It'd probably be 2022 before we sign on with them. But if we sign on with them, it'll be till 2052 that we'll be giving our garbage to MIRA. And that, that's something that I'm not, and a lot of towns aren't happy about. So it's...
With no, with no limits?
Well, no, there are limits. There will be limits in the contract. Right now, they can't go, they can't go over a certain amount. I don't know what that is.
For a year?
Per the life of the contract. Which is why they're where they are now. Because they, they're, I can't say that they're losing money, but they certainly would. You would get that impression if you were at a meeting with them.
Just to sign on for a 30-year agreement.
Oh, no, I know.
It's a little concerning.
That's crazy. But it may in fact be the best, the best matches for us, but for the community. Like we're talking about the Sustainability Connecticut and for, and for the country, really. But, you know, what are we going to do with all of our waste? And we need to get a good program going that produces less waste, you know? So, and actually, I'm sorry you got off track with that. But that leads us to MIRA again. If we produce less garbage, then they need to charge more per ton because they won't have the income to keep the place running, you know? So, but we do need to produce less garbage. And we, Sabre has got a good program that just started out. I'm going to hope to get those people, the folks there into town. It's just an educational thing, so we can compost more, do a lot, a lot of different things with our waste and recycle them. And how we recycle, the single stream just doesn't seem to be working for the state. We need to get more, you know, individual plastics and bottles and all that kind of thing. Bottle bill, I'm not a big fan of, but it seems to be getting some strength. We might see that in this legislative thing. But I want you, and again, I'll give us to you, we may as well take it.
The big numbers scare me.
They scare the heck out of me. But that's where they're going, anyway. We are going to have to produce less garbage. And I don't know how we're going to do that, because we're going to study. London has got a good program going. Stonington, I think, has got something going. And a couple of towns up in the northwest. And we'll learn from, learn from what they're doing. But again, there's nothing for us to do tonight. I'll get you this information, and we'll talk some more about it next. But we do have to ask next week, whether it's a yea or a nay.
Yeah.
But we do have to ask at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Got another quick question, I think it's on that. Do you know what MIRA is? Is that the trash burning plant in Hartford?
Yes, yeah.
How much tonnage do we go through a month, a year?
Hour ton? I don't know. We budget $90,000 for, for just for, no, for the year.
For the year?
Yeah. And that's just for, just for the household waste. That doesn't include the recycling or any of the other stuff. And $90 a ton, that would give you an idea of how much tonnage we have. So that's it from me, for Audience of Citizens. Anyone else?
I just wanted to add that Sustainable Connecticut, some of the towns got money to do education for recycling. And they've set up like the compost in...
Right.
Yeah, so that might be something we can...
That would be great.
If we decide to do that, that might be a project that we can...
Sure. Okay. We said goodbye to Ruthie Sunday?
Yeah.
Second layer.
It was a very big turnout, it was a nice trip.
Yeah, it was. Very nice send-off. So, there's nothing else?
Can we talk a little bit about the ordinance project? So, I think I understand it, but tell me if I don't. So, we paid a company, we got a debt, we paid a company to renew, to correct our language, and to make sure we're compliant with state laws and statutes. So we only have a document. So do we have access to what the changes to ordinances are, what they are?
So it's more often, I don't know if we have a higher limit.
The code book itself is the list of changes. And the draft of the code is available online. And our usual list of ordinances is just that, it's a list. It's language pulled from the town meetings that set that ordinance in place, which is why it's so cumbersome. So that is still up online. And then the new code, the draft of the new code is up there, so you can compare the two. I did, I did come up with a few examples of the kinds of, I hate to say changes because the laws themselves, the laws themselves do not change. It's, you know, getting rid of the excess garbage. So for example, when it comes to our annual town meeting date, what our current list of ordinances online says for just our annual town meeting date says to proactively amend the town resolution to specify the date of the annual town meeting on the third Monday of the month of May, starting fiscal year 1990 to 91, and heads forth. The original resolution may be found in the Town Acts Book, Volume 5, Page 204, May 23rd, 1990, Volume 7, Page 285, History, Original Resolution, dated 1/25/1946. Volume 5, Page 204, designated the fourth Monday of May, 1946. And every year thereafter, the attorneys looked at this and pulled out the law, which says the annual town meeting shall be held on the third Monday in May of each year. So it's that kind of thing. There's a lot of language in there. It's confusing. It's got history that doesn't even really apply anymore. The dates that they started, that they made this decision, doesn't really apply. So it brought it down to the actual, the actual law. So it was, that was one of the things that they've done. A couple ordinances, and this is all just in the first chapter. We had, we had an ordinance that established the Deep River Visiting Nurses in 1976. And again, it's, you know, it's a long, lengthy thing. But the thing is, that, that board was dissolved in 2010. So it really doesn't need to be listed as one of our laws anymore, no longer exists. And another one was our local probate court. It was established in 1947. But in 2011, the state then reorganized the probate court system. So we don't need that listed. And all it does is make it difficult to understand where we really are right now. And as far as the repeal of state statutes, and this one, this really explains why I wanted to have this one, why I thought this was worthwhile. Because on page four of our current list of ordinances, there's one that says, ordinance providing for participation in the Connecticut River Valley Council of elected officials. And that was established in 2003, and refers to Connecticut General Statutes 4-124C through 4-124H. And then right after that, it lists the resolution providing for the establishment of the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, established in 2012. And it references General Statutes 4-124I through 4-124P. The thing is, the latter caused the repeal of all the GS, the 124A through H was repealed. And that second one was done. So by having this, this company analyze this, they were able to take it, consolidate it, because they both are seeing essentially the same thing, but to update it. They consolidated it and put in the parts of the ordinance that the state still does, still has. You know, it's removed, the repealed ones. So again, it's just, it's just updating it, making it current. Because we don't need to know what happened back then. And none of that is ever lost. That's all in our Town Acts books. They stay there forever. They are preserved until the end of time. So if everyone researching and stuff, it's all right there. But as far as the code, which is our current laws that they stand today, that's basically are just saying what the real laws that are still in effect that still matter to our town are. And then, you know, the best part about it, as far as I'm concerned, besides the authorization, which I think was necessary, everything is coded. When you say it's codified, you're basically finding all these little things, applying a number to it, and then you can index it. So it's easy to find. You know, we don't have an index now. You have this table of contents that's pretty general, and you're like, I can't. You can't, you don't even know what word to pick to find what it is you're looking for. So now, every law has got its own code, it's organized properly, and there's an index. So they're going to be easy to look up, easy to find, and easy to understand. So it's really, I mean, it's a very, I'm very pleased. It's a good thing for the town. It brings us into the 21st century. And like I said, nothing, nothing, none of the laws are being changed unless they were changed without, or knowing about it. Yes?
Is the town having an attorney make sure that all this transition is, has been captured accurately? Or are we just assuming that this outside source entity that we hired got this right the first time? There's a potential of assuming going on that this is right. And it's as far-reaching as it is, it just seems like we're taking this thing a little bit too light. And so if you could answer my first question, is an attorney checking what is given to you as supposedly the new gospel?
MUNICO has attorneys there. It is an attorney who specializes in state law and municipal law in this... It is an attorney who specializes in state law and municipal law in the state of Connecticut that did this review. So, and then each of the departments checked over anything that they wanted to change. And there were a couple of little things they said, that's, I don't think that should be changed that way, and they put it back the way it was.
But isn't a company that's supposedly having their own attorneys check something that we're paying for, it's still not giving us the comfort well, who is checking it on behalf of the town besides a third party that we're paying directly? This is, again, it's a law of assuming going on that Brad X Company with their attorneys has gotten this thing accurate. Our ordinances, in our tactics, we're the ones that are the risk bearers here. Who is checking this to make sure this has been captured accurately? That's what has been raised the buzz the last week. Otherwise, you gentlemen potentially are assuming that this has been captured through this entity with a lot of emails back and forth, or what have you. That's all.
I think it's fairly safe to assume that attorneys do know what they're doing, and the fact that this company is one of the three state-approved companies, and we can't just hire anybody. We hire people that the state have reviewed, and they've had some experience with, and they believe they do a good job. And like I said, when we got back what they wanted to do, it was certainly that once the department said, "Actually, work with these laws every day, and they're very familiar with what it is." They probably saw anything out of line, which not too many did. Most of them completely agreed with what was done. And so, that was, I guess, the third-party check?
I understand what you're saying. Well, I hear it loud and clear. My question back to you, Amy, would be, has there been any other towns that have done this recently? And if so, did they have a third-party attorney? Right? That's what you're asking, correct?
No, he's asking if we...
If we have a third attorney, a third-party attorney, we do, like, the way, when I'm running businesses, whatever, anytime in a business, I would outsource something, I'd have the company attorney throw a heavy war on it, so I could sleep. And then I...
I was asking, Amy, if, maybe Clinton just did it. Did Clinton hire their own attorneys? What my question should have spelled out. I didn't spell out exactly the way.
Just to make sure we're all assuming something.
I'm just assuming, and the town has done this upgrade?
Most of the towns in Connecticut do this on a regular basis. It hasn't done it in many years.
Do they hire...
I don't know if they do or not.
Okay, that's my question, and I think it's what you're asking for, correct?
Our town attorney, the person, you would think.
Our town attorney...
She needs to go over it and...
She's been given it. She, you know, she didn't send back anything that...
And I think that's a general concern there.
So, is there any protection, like, I mean, I think we're digging kind of deep, but as far as going down the road, seems to be a problem with it, or is this some kind of question? Are they have any responsibility or liability with the changes they might have made, or...
I don't think they would have liability, unless they did something wrong.
Well, that's what I mean, if they did something wrong, they'd never get a problem.
If, I mean, ordinances get revised all the time. I mean, if, and let's face it, what's out there right now, a lot of it is obsolete, and it's been out there representing us all this time. So, if we adopt the code book, and somewhere online say, "Hey, wait a minute, that's not right," then we bring it up to the town meeting and change that ordinance, and just make sure that that gets fixed that way.
Not to belabor it, but if you just see what's created the buzz in the last week or so, is that picking up a topic similar to this, and if the MO is that it's okay because the state is throwing cold war on it, though we're absorbing the risk, is the town of Deep River, this could be multiplied times, or times a project, topics. So, something as important as the ordinances, the fact that it just seems so casual is spruiking people, that's all. And that it is not, if you folks had just said, "We have an attorney, the town attorney is checking on this to make sure that this is captured accurately the first time, we're good, we would be fine." But right now, it's a staff member who we highly respect, and nobody else is zooming on. And if I was in one of your seats after running an organization, that's the kind of stuff I would never assume that somebody captured accurately without having someone check it, without period. An idea you said.
When these came in, they lived in the town hall for probably four months, five months, while we were all reviewing. Every department that any ordinance had anything to do with, reviewed that ordinance. It was subsequently sent to the town attorney. The town attorney, I don't believe, went through every single word and made sure that they were all right, but did review them and sent it back.
Say that I kept saying, "I approve this."
I would not suggest that her language was as defined as that. She said she did not find any problems with this. If you are, if you in the town are insistent upon it, we can spend a whole bunch of money. This is usually a thirty thousand dollar project. We can spend a bunch more money to review these and ensure that munis...
Municipality?
Municipality, whatever the name of the company is.
Oh, MuniCode.
MuniCode has done a good job. That's fine with me. We had an opportunity to catch up with what communities around the state have been doing, and have been trusting, and have been keeping themselves up to date. Deep River hasn't done this for as long as I, as long as I've lived in town. I'm not sure that we have ever done it. So, it seemed like a good opportunity for us to do that. If we, as a town, believe that we should spend some of our own money to confirm all of this, which is really just reading it again and doing all the same work that Munico just did, then that's fine, that's what we'll do. Or we just say no and don't do it, and leave it as it is. I'm almost more concerned with some of the other things that you've said tonight about what leads to distrust of what's going on, and what's the buzz of this week. And I've only seen a couple of emails back and forth, so I don't really know what you mean by...
It's one thing that somebody has checked it, that's all. I mean, it's just, you've all, I don't know how many other folks here, we can outsource things all the time for a third party to generate something, but at the end of the day, somebody would have to make sure, go to the board, or whoever, and say, "Has this thing been, are we comfortable that this thing has been captured?" Because we're all, our necks are on the back. Are we comfortable? We paid the attorney, whatever. We're in a small town, we're on spinning wheels, but just as long as we all have an understanding that we shouldn't assume stuff that is going to change, this is going to be it for as long as we're alive now, and that's all. And maybe that's fine, and we're all down here leaving alone, let you do your job. But it just seems to be too casual of an approach on an important topic. That's about as best as I can articulate.
There's nothing casual about this. There's nothing casual.
It's, like I said, the state has to approve these people. They don't take that casually. This rant is not a casual thing. And I've been working on this for about two years. It's been anything but casual. They have a team of lawyers, respected lawyers, state-approved lawyers, who are familiar with the law. They have a colleague that's with a fine-tooth comb. We've been back and forth with emails, we've questioned things, they've answered et cetera factorly, or they've put it, you know, done what we wanted them to do. But there's been nothing casual about it. This has been a long, hard road, and a worthwhile one. And I think the finished product is really good. It speaks for itself, and I have complete faith in that company.
My last suggestion is, based on all the town meetings, and it's been a little feisty in recent years, I would just recommend that we just take it one more step, and just give the residents more, two more seconds of line in whatever report, in whatever, just to say, "Here's what we're doing and why, and here's how the process is going." You don't want an explanation for everything you do, or you're never going to get anything done. But since things have been misinterpreted, confused, something as important as this topic on a go-forward basis, just say a little more than less about the process, so everybody can sleep in the town, that's all. And I think the general consensus is that's still not fair, that it's transparent, but give us the benefit of a little more, "We're good on this, and here's why we're good on it," and that's all. And maybe that, if I, maybe that's not reasonable, but it seems to be reasonable.
I just don't know how much more we can do. I thought that we had done that. You know, we brought this to the town. There is no deadline. We're not going to vote next week on this. We brought it to the town at our last selectmen's meeting, put it out there that this is what's happening. We've continued to try to respond to questions that, you know, emails that come in. You came in, you sent us an email, so we responded to it. I don't know how else we can get more open than, "This is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, this is how we get it." It wouldn't get past the Board of Selectmen if we weren't confident in the work that was done. We have confidence in our town clerk. Our town clerk has confidence in the people that she hired. That's my answer to that. If we can, if you have a suggestion, send us an email, and we'll look at, we'll try to adopt that. Hang on.
So, I think from residents who aren't necessarily that everybody knew they're in as areas as you are, it felt kind of surprising. And so, the message was, "This has been revised, got back there, you will vote on it." And I think people were left with, "Well, what is this really, and how do this process work?" So, maybe the same, you know, the same email list that you use for other things, perhaps you sent out, and said, "There seems to be some concern in town, just want you to know that this has been vetted by, you know, all the town departments." I mean, I think that's the kind of reassurance that people would be looking for, because you are asking us to vote on this. So, really, you feel confident that it's been vetted correctly.
Well, that's how we hear this. You come to the meeting, and you tell us that you're not comfortable, that you don't trust what we're doing, so we will try to do a better explanation as to how we present it to you.
Can I also say, you know, there's, just because nobody knew that this was coming, I mean, I just heard about the sustainable thing for the first time tonight. Everybody here has heard about it for the first time tonight. Someone went into getting it here.
But these are the ordinances of the town.
Right, and this is the first time.
There has to be a first mention.
They were reviewed. It is, it's the first time. I'm sorry that it took you by surprise, but, I mean, it just is, this is it. And here we are telling you about it, and explaining the process, and getting new copies to review, I have the book on review in the office, here to answer any questions, no deadline, it's not like very hard, you gotta, let's push this through. So, I don't, you know, everybody has to hear about something for the first time. And it's, there's no other way to do it than to just say, "Here it is for the first time."
You said you were working on it for two years? Did it start two years ago, or is this...
I was working on the grant for two years. I had to acquire the grant, and the grant that is allowed for this town is smaller, because we're a smaller town, and so this took two years for the grants.
So, are we increasing language or decreasing language? So, you go from a book from three hundred pages to one hundred and fifty pages?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's taken on the cumbersome part, and we're left with the basic law.
Interesting. So, I was just wondering, like, going forward, what the key milestones are, and like, what the timeline is for those different things, and what that process is for just the key milestones.
There is no timeline on this. We don't have to, we don't have to do it. But at the last selectmen's meeting, what I suggested is that we will gauge, we'll spend a month gauging the public interest in this, and determine whether we want to have, bring it to a town meeting sometime in the next month after that, or if we want to just delay this until the big budget meeting, the town meeting, when we've got our budget, and this can be a part of that call.
So, what are the key milestones, Angus?
The milestone is that there is no timeline on, is that the Board of Selectmen will approve it and move it to town meeting. Then the town meeting will be scheduled at some future time. So, there's two milestones. There's the Board of Selectmen, and then there's the town meeting.
Okay.
And there is no timeline. I mean, if everyone is, can do this one ordinance a week, if that's what the town wants to do, we can do that. There's no schedule.
I will say, however, this was done based on what our ordinances were in 2016 when the project was started. There's been a couple of updates for a couple of ordinances that I'm now sitting on, because we would have to get this approved before I could then say, "Okay, this is what's been passed since, and it will be incorporated into the code." If we wait too long, it'll be more review, it might become a new grant project.
How many pages is the...
I don't have a note, ten pages. I mean, this is, the draft, the draft on it is two hundred and twelve pages.
Oh, the hundred and sixty wasn't?
A lot of, I think it was a hundred and sixty-five, but a lot of those pages are just, it says, "Reserve for future use." This chapter is reserved for future use. Or, you know, all these pages, but there's this much on one page and nothing on the back. So, it looks, it looks like more than it is.
So, we're writing on the book?
Writing on the book, that, yes. Writing on, the code is what it's called.
P D S Technology, is that PDF or anything like that?
Yes, it's been posted on the website.
Oh, it has?
On the website, it's two hundred and twelve pages. I just was actually looking at it this afternoon. Because I have a lot of suggestions.
John, you had a question?
No, not a question, just an observation. The town ordinances have not been revised, right? No. Only thing that's been revised is the presentation for ease of research. So, if there's any question, you can always go back to the more complicated version, and it's the same.
That's what Amy said, those will always be in the record books. Those, we're not, we're eliminating.
So, I'd like for them not to be online at some point, because a lot of it just doesn't apply anymore, so it's confusing, and I don't think it's good to have it out there.
But it's not like people think that their ordinances have been...
They ask themselves, and not you.
So, I think the originals and the proposed changes are available online.
Yes.
Probably the best backdrop is the people, and I think that people should read them.
Well, and I should point out, when I say, when the new draft is online, it was, it's put, it's on the main page, the homepage of the website, and it's put in those user announcements, it's attached to that. So, you're not, you know, if you look up ordinances, that's not what you're going to find. You'll have to find it on the homepage with the announcement and message from the town clerk.
So, that document doesn't have the edits contained within, right?
No, it's just the draft.
Okay.
Just the draft.
I think what people are concerned about is that ordinances, or town ordinances can actually affect anybody. You know, if you're walking down the street with your hat on sideways, now, still isn't legal. So, I think that's why there's such a concern about it.
That's still in there, by the way.
No, that part of my concern is, people might go to what's currently online and see something, and think, "Oh, my God, I didn't do that, or I did not know that was a law." And they don't bother to go down and read the whole thing. At the bottom it says, "This was abolished and repealed." It's not a law anymore, and yet it's still up there, appearing to be one.
So, it's very important in the town, so I just wanted to say that I think that's the record books. It's how we know.
But, and like I said, it's not written stone. If something is found to not be true, or we look at something and say, you know, "I don't think the town should do that anymore," then you can, you know, bring it to the first selectmen, bring it to the towns, and it can be changed, or updated all the time. So, and sometimes new ordinances are introduced as the media rises, and that's how we do it.
Angus, I wonder if some of the actuals, when people approach me and say, "Hey, they just did all this thing," and there's one single copy in Amy's office, and that's all there is. Maybe fix that problem. She made the electronic version of that thing, and they'll post it on the site, and that can also be emailed back. So, Amy was very forthcoming on that. This is not the way you reply to anybody's direction. But people sometimes misunderstand what was done and why it was done. It sounds like it was a good thing that had to be done, but one of the other folks said, ways to, we have the same problem in our parish in Chester, ways to communicate in a word than we think we are can also help out. On a topic that seems to have risen to the level of being pretty lasting in the community is the point that we're trying to invade. On topics of who you live with, the residents for a long time, go more than less on the communication of what was about, how you flushed it out, your comfort level, something. You can't do that on any topic every day of the week, we would have expected to. But town ordinances, or something of that level, give us, just spend a little more time on the, "You flushed it out, and you're feeling good about it, and here's why," and we can get off and go with running our own march.
As I explained, that's what we started to do at the last selectmen's meeting, was the first public announcement that this was being done. That was the first step. From that, I think Amy put something out online. From that, I think Amy put something online, and from that, we've responded to, done all the things based on some of your emails. I mean, I thought that that's what we were doing. We were trying, we have to start with a first announcement. This is what we're doing. There is no deadline, we're like, hurry up, we're going to vote on this next week, everybody has to learn all of our ordinances, or any of that. We're just trying to express that we are trying to clean things up. That's all we're doing. You know? Anything else? Okay, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Okay, I'll call a special town meeting to order at 7:36. And the first thing is I'll take a motion for a town meeting moderator. And I'll make a motion that Duane Gates moderate the meeting. I get a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Duane, the meeting is yours.
Okay, I would like to elect Clerk Amy Winchell. I need a second.
Oh, you don't need, you could just appoint me.
I appoint Amy Winchell as the clerk, and Amy, can you read the call?
I will. This is the legal notice for Town of Deep River of a special town meeting Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Richard H. Smith Town Hall Conference Room. The purpose of this meeting is to approve actions of the Board of Selectmen's Regular Meeting of January 28th, 2020, Appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission, Alan Parry, regular member, term to expire December 1st, 2020, and this notice was dated in Deep River, Connecticut, on Monday, February 3rd, 2020.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the call of the meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve item one on the call of the meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on item one of the call?
Just that I'm very glad to have Alan take the time to come and join our planning and zoning commission. I think he'd be a welcome addition to the group. He's already added as a, as a, what do you call him?
As an alternate.
As an alternate. He's already added to the conversation and made it a better commission, so I'm glad to have him aboard.
So here, Alan, thank you for disturbing. All right, do we have a vote on item number one of the call?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Carol, Carol.
That's it.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any time?
7:36.